The condition at the bus stop is very similar to option two A and two B. The advantage with this particular option is that the westbound non-transit vehicle capacity remains as it currently is. However, this comes at the expense of not making improvements for the bus travel times and reliability in the westbound direction. In the eastbound direction, since there is a dedicated transit-only lane and the capacity is maintained as it currently is, there are improvements for both buses and pedestrians. Option three B, like option two B, looks at the option of having the cycle facility at the sidewalk level, thereby adding an additional buffer. And the condition at bus stops is very much similar as in the other option. And like option two B, this option three B adds additional sidewalk space, which comes at the expense of, you know, being a more costly option, adding in or moving curbs, reconfiguring the drainage. In order to summarize all of these various options that I've just presented to you, almost all the options add bus boarding islands. So there is a marginal improvement in the bus travel times, you know, by the addition of these bus boarding islands. Option two and three look at providing dedicated transit lanes. Option three is only in the eastbound direction. Option two is in both east and westbound direction. Bicycles are accommodated in the form of a two-way cycle track in option two and three, whereas they are accommodated at roadway grade, either between parked cars and curb or between parked cars and traffic in option one. Option two B and three B, which are the more expensive options, which move the sidewalk, which move the curbs, provide a much more generous space for pedestrians and also gives the opportunity to add more sidewalk amenities and create a unified streetscape character. And almost all the options, except option two, retains the vehicle capacity. And the option two and three take away parking. One other common theme that spans across option one, two, and three is the proposal to eliminate the bus stops at Harland Street. We looked at the ridership at all the bus stops, and it looked like the Harland Street, the pair of bus stops at that particular location had low ridership. The advantage is that this move definitely reduces the bus travel time, but it comes at the expense of transit patrons having to walk an additional one to two blocks to reach the nearest bus stop. I'll turn it back to Diana to summarize the responses and comments from the workshop and pop-up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we've had some public comments and survey responses. We had some email comments. Sunny Wong from the Granite Expo said that curbside parking is very important for their business, and she doesn't want us to take away the parking on 40th Street, and that eliminating a mixed travel lane would cause a lot of congestion. I'm boiling these down. They were very eloquent letters. John Fricki, a former council member, said that the separated bike path should extend the full length of 40th Street, and the buses should be in the middle lane, partly so that the stops are separate from bikes, so we don't have a problem of the bikes hitting pedestrian, the bus passengers. Brian Bowle, who is a bike commuter and pedestrian and bus rider, said that we should provide easier traffic merges for buses and separate bike traffic from vehicles and buses. And Rob Arias, who puts out the Emeryville Eye, wants us to improve the dirt path adjacent to the 40th Street Bridge, which would then connect this to the future extension of the Greenway. And we got a couple of phone calls. Winifred Allrider, who is an Endante board member, and she does not want us to remove the left turn onto San Pablo Avenue because it would make traffic worse on Adeline Street, which is true. And Ron Dong, a Bay Street resident, said that eliminating a travel lane would make the existing stop-and-grow traffic even worse and would divert traffic to other streets. We had workshop where, last night, where we invited people to vote with dots, and we'll have that in a minute, and to put sticky notes on the boards with their comments. So this is my boiling down of their comments. For the bus hub, east of San Pablo, somebody pointed out that the bikes have the same problem at 40th San Pablo eastbound as they do westbound, and we should address that, too. That's like in front of Baskin Robbins. And the signal on Adeline crossing 40th takes forever for a bike. We should look into that timing. We should choose options that give buses priority. This was a TransBay commuter saying this. The cars would get into that bike pocket, they think, one person thought, and we should have buses and bikes share the road here, somebody else thought. And another one says cyclists need protection. She thought the option one was pretty useless. The westbound turn lane is unsafe for cyclists. Another one loved the green space. This is interesting idea. Mid-block crossing is needed in the middle of that bus hub. Traffic calming is needed. Pedestrian refuge is needed. West of San Pablo, someone asked us to synchronize the signal lights on 40th Street better. There should be a pedestrian scramble at 40th San Pablo intersection. How would the transition, that's the wrong word, from the two-way cycle track work? I want bus-only lanes and bike lanes on both sides. If we were willing and able to do something with the median, we maybe could consider a way to do that. We should incentivize transit use by having bus lanes. The cycle track should continue to the Shell Mountain Way cycle track. We should make an enhanced bike boulevard and leave 40th for the cars and buses. Question is where. Cars will cross the bike lane between the parking and the curb. So this person was saying that's why the bike lane should not be next to the curb. And when we roll out the cycle track, we should include education and enforcement. And we should only allow cars to drop off passengers on the side streets. And we had a survey, an online survey, which has had 70 responses so far, and we went out and did pop-ups at six of the bus stops one day and got 29, I think, surveys filled in. And what the people said, we didn't ask the question right on the survey, so we didn't ask long term and short term. That's why I don't have that answer. But generally, for the survey, and specifically long term for the other two, we have these people's responses to option one, fewer people. Option two and option three are neck and neck. Some people like the median and some people like the bigger sidewalk. And most people thought it would be a good idea to do option one in the short term, anyway. So west of San Pablo Avenue, keeping the parking was not very popular. There were a lot more people that wanted to have the cycle track and the bus lane. If parking is kept, most people wanted the protected bikeway with the bikes between the parking and the curb, even though there's been interesting confusion on Telegraph. Rollout might be key, how the rollout's done. West of San Pablo Avenue, the choice between one or two bus-only lanes. Option two, two bus-only lanes, was popular, 53 to 29. This is combining all the responses now, the survey and the workshop and the pop-up. Option three, one bus-only lane, was only 29. So you can see, these are not the drivers responding. The cycle track level, sub-option A, the cycle track at roadway grade was only half as popular as the race cycle track with the wider sidewalk with trees. And about the bus stops at Harland Street, most people thought eliminate the bus stop and reduce travel time. We had transit agency staffers at the workshop last night, and they had some concerns. One was concerned about the bike lane in option one, the Emery go-around, Ronnie Hat trip. And the bus-only lane is safer for wheelchair loading. Emery go-around buses don't have those nice ramps that the AC Transit buses have, and it takes them three to five minutes to load a passenger. So we should bear that in mind when we're thinking about having the buses stop in the travel lane. AC Transit said that bus-only lanes are best because they also still like to load out of traffic. So now we have discussion questions. These were from the staff report. For the bus hub area between San Pablo Avenue and Adeline Street, what do you like and dislike about each option? Would you like to see one A in the short term, and which option do you prefer long term? For the part of 40th between Emery Street and the bridge, would you prefer to keep parking and forego an added bus-only lane or eliminate the parking to create a bus-only lane? If the parking is kept, should the bikeway be between the parked cars and the curb or between the parked cars and the traffic? If the parking is removed and an eastbound bus-only lane is added, should a westbound vehicle lane be converted to a bus-only lane? If the parking is removed and an eastbound bus-only lane is added, should the curb be extended, sidewalk widened, and bikeway placed at sidewalk level, and the trees moved to between the sidewalk and the traffic? And lastly, should the Haven Street bus stops be eliminated to reduce bus travel time? So that concludes our presentation, and we would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. There's a lot of info. He's trying to keep up. This is a study session, and I guess we will move on to questions first before opening it up to public comment next.
And Chair Barrera, I'd just like to note that Catherine Voe from AC Transit is also here, if you want to hear from her.
Okay, do you have a presentation or anything that you want to add at this time?
No, I'm just here if you all have any questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to questions. Tino, would you like to get us started?
Sure. First of all, the young man who did this work. I spent a long time being a person who drew a lot of civil work on city catch of hands, city of, up in, you know, in the city of Hoquiem up in Oregon. I did a bunch of, so I'm very familiar with what you're drawing here. I also watch a lot of YouTube, and one thing that I noticed on there is these guys like to videotape themselves skateboarding and flying down. I mean, it seems to me bikes are a suggestion, bike lanes and all that stuff, seems to be a remark, like it's a free-for-all. And that's one aspect, but in terms of what we're doing here, I recognize the expense and complexity when it comes to like doing all the infrastructure and redoing it, pulling all electrical. I mean, it's a lot of work, and it is really expensive. And the thing that catches me the most is you got this bridge, and you got this intersection, you got this other intersection, is that, I mean, we're talking about 10 blocks, and we're trying to recreate a world through Emeryville in this 10 blocks. And so nothing's really, I saw this one mention of art on there, and I'm really advocate of that.
Commissioner Young, I just want to remind you that this is a time for questions, so we'll give our comments afterwards, but just...
My question is, can you define a little bit more about how you see the bikers and how you feel like you'd want to corral them? And then my other question is, how would you see how many of the art commission could be applied to this work, because that was kind of something I read about?
So that's a great question. Obviously, there are several ways of how, let me get to the art part first. There are several ways of how art could be accommodated in the various options that we are, or we just showed to you. It is very obvious in the option where there is a larger space for pedestrians, you know, where you are expanding the sidewalk, there might be opportunities to have art installations or some other sort of, you know, like streetscapes or furniture or a unified streetscape character that brings in art along this stretch of 40th Street. The other thing that we could play on is the art shelter program that the city of Emeryville already has, where I believe the bus shelter is used as a location where art is installed. And right now, on 40th Street, I think there is only one bus shelter at Emery's, I think 40th and Emery on the westbound side, that has an art shelter. And so the creation of these bus boarding islands, there might be more opportunities to bring in these art shelter, or sorry, transit shelters where art could be incorporated and that program could be extended out. In terms of your first question, which was how do we envision bicyclists using this corridor? I think the idea is to tie in with the improvements that are happening east of the project area. I think the city of Oakland is already trying to make certain improvements on the stretch of 40th Street from Adeline all the way till Telegraph. I'm not sure where their project extends to. And then 40th Street is an important connector for everyone who is using it to get onto the Bay Bridge Trail. So improving the bicycle, you know, facilities along 40th Street will greatly help all those people to get onto the recreational trail, as well as to people who get onto the business, as well as go to the big-box stores, go to the various offices that are located within one block, you know, radius of 40th Street.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. You have mentioned traffic capacity reductions, and you've also mentioned expense. I see in the conclusions that you have kind of a threshold-level cost idea, you know, that some things are more expensive than other things. Has there been any additional economic analysis completed, or is it really at the threshold level for the economic?
At this stage, we were really looking at, you know, what the broader concepts are so that we could do all of that for what is chosen as the preferred concept by the community and the city. So at the moment, we have not looked at it, but the next phase of the project is exactly going to do that, you know, run the transportation analysis for the preferred option.
Okay, and then, so that's relative to the economic component, relative to the capacity component, what analysis has been done around traffic capacity?
So that's what I meant. The transportation analysis will factor in how the capacity will be impacted by any of the option, you know, whichever is chosen as the preferred option, how the capacity will be impacted, and what could be done in order to mitigate if it's going on the downward side.
Okay, because I think those are kind of essential questions, even at this point in terms of winnowing down. So it's, you know, I'm sort of wondering about the method by which you will move through this process. But I'll let other people ask questions. I have one other question was about, the initial focus was about bus time reduction. And I think the bigger thing is there are so many options, there are so many factors going on here. Which one is actually meeting that goal of the best bus time reduction?
I would say for the options west of San Pablo Avenue, it would obviously be the one where we are proposing dedicated transit-only lanes, because that way, you know, they are not sharing it with the vehicles, they have a dedicated facility to, you know, just stream down 40th Street.
And which option is that?
Option two.
Okay.
Chair Barrera?
Yes.
If I could just embellish a little bit.
Sure.
The consultant team includes Farr and Peers, a traffic consulting firm, and AREP, an engineering firm, and they haven't really been put to work yet. The idea is, at this sort of preliminary stage, to try to winnow down what exact options we're going to be looking at. It, you know, could be more than one, certainly. And then after we figure that out, then they will sharpen their pencils and get to work on calculating traffic volumes and bus speeds and construction costs and all those kinds of things. So all that capacity, all that capability is on the consultant team, we just haven't done it yet.
Okay, okay. And just to finish up the question about that goal of the bus time reduction, you mentioned two, but that's the west of San Pablo. What's the east?
Yes, for the east of San Pablo Avenue, I would say it would either be option two or three, because I'm not sure if, and again, that is something that we might have to look into if we need to, but right now, it shows two travel lanes in each direction. If one of the lanes were to become a dedicated transit lane, that would probably impact the, you know, vehicular travel time a lot more. So that is something that needs to be looked at, and we would do that in the next stage of the project.
Okay, okay. I'll let others ask. Commissioner Dolson?
Yeah. I know that there's a planning effort going on for San Pablo corridor altogether, and I'm wondering whether you've coordinated with that and whether the corner bulb-out extensions on San Pablo at 40th have any kind of interference with any bicycle planning that's going on
Some of our staff has been participating in that, and we've been having staff meetings about it at various stages, and they haven't picked their options yet. But by the time we're doing our design, I think we'll know more about what the corridor people are doing. It will change. Once we know what the corridor people are doing, it will change. On the other hand, mostly we're focused on 40th Street, and I think we will still be able to reduce the curb radii and make some bulb-outs, even if, depends what they do, but we still might be able to do that.
Did I understand that the medians, from what Charlie had said earlier, that the medians are now fixed because of the work that Calendar and the grant that was received? The reason that I'm, one reason that I'm asking is the choices on east of San Pablo Avenue about whether to remove them or whether to widen them or whatever. And the other is that options two and three, west of San Pablo Avenue, both cut the median by a couple of feet.
The Calendar's work does not include the median between San Pablo and Adeline.
Okay.
I don't believe. And for the median west of San Pablo, when we had the kickoff meeting with Calendar after their contract was approved by the council, we told them that we may need to take two feet out of the median on 40th Street for future, you know, in order to accommodate the study. So what they're going to do in their design is to just show basically expendable ground cover in that two-foot section. So that, and probably if there are new trees planted, they would be centered on the 10-foot median as opposed to the 12-foot median. So if the two feet are not taken off the median, the trees will look slightly off-center, but most people probably wouldn't notice that. So their design will be designed so that you could easily remove two feet in the future and nobody would notice.
And I'm also wondering what the rationale aside from there's just limited space for having a transit-only lane in an eastbound direction and not in a westbound direction?
Well, option two looks at having a transit-only lane in both the directions. Option three was just a subversion of that, where we were trying to retain the two-lane vehicle capacity in the westbound direction. So in that particular option, the idea was to only show it in the eastbound direction.
But there hasn't been any looking at the traffic volumes relative going east and west at the commute times?
Well, we're pretty aware of the traffic volumes. We're working with Public Works, and they have traffic volumes in their head. And what we've noticed is that the traffic volumes westbound are higher, but the traffic is more clogged up eastbound because of San Pablo Avenue. So because of that, it's more important to have a bus lane going eastbound. It also is where it fits.
And I guess this is probably something that you can't answer, but how realistic is it to get easements along the length of this project on the south side of the street?
Well, one thing that I have to note, and then maybe you can add in, is for most of the base options, an easement would only be required for the length of the bus stop, which is around 100 to 140 feet. For the more fancier options, if I have to say, you know, where you are elevating the race cycle track and creating a unified streetscape character, which is option two B and three B on the west of San Pablo, if the idea is to create a much more wider sidewalk environment as pleasant as on the north side, then there would be a need for a continuous two-feet easement, if I remember it right, along the entire stretch of 40th Street on the south side. Else, it is only limited on the south side at bus stops to the length of the bus boarding islands, which is 100 to 140 feet.
Okay. The one other question I have is that it sounded like you consider the two-way cycle track to be safer. How does it compare with buffered lanes on each side in terms of just bicyclists trying to access south of 40th Street to get to the shopping areas? There's a lot of bike lanes on the cross streets.
Right. No, that's a great question. And I think one of the things that we have to do in the next phase of the project, where we'll employ the transportation consultants that we have on our firm, or on our team, sorry, is to look at these intersection treatments at each location in order to provide access onto the south side of the street, as well as merge it back to the one lane in each direction, which is east of Emery.
I probably have more questions, but that's all I can think of.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay, I have just a few questions.
Great.
Let's see. The first question pertains to how much, what's the estimated time saving for the transit-only lanes? I'm very curious.
I don't think I have that answer. An answer from the top of your head, based on your experience? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Hi, I'm Katherine Vine with AC Transit. Katherine, both AC Transit and the transportation planner for this area. To answer your question, it's hard to tell, first off. What we usually do is we do a before-study and look at our times throughout a corridor. And then once improvements are made, we look at the after-study. And it really depends on the traffic volumes and what types of improvements and the number of conflicts that occur. So each of the options, of course, as presented, shows different number of conflicts with either vehicular travel or bicycle travel, and how long it takes for our buses to get to our stop and then to go along or pull out, pull in. The answer is, it could vary. And it could vary by stop as well, depending on the number of ridership. If ridership increases at a stop because the pedestrians like that stop more, the dwell time there may take a little longer. But if we remove a stop, then the balancing can be re-accommodated, and so there wouldn't be an issue with travel time in that way. Hope I answered it.
Somewhat.
Somewhat.
Thank you. The best you could. I understand that it's pretty complicated, and I'm really looking for a number, like if I'm on the bus, am I going to save five minutes getting to the bridge? Am I going to save 10? Yeah, and so a range is something I'm interested in learning. But we can move on. The, ah, can you speak to any feedback that was received from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee?
I believe that...
No, we haven't been to the BPAC yet.
Okay.
That's coming up in September, right?
Great, so that's scheduled. Excellent.
Good.
Okay, and my last question is about the, right before you get onto the 40th Street Bridge, how does a two-way cycle track affect the design that's proposed for that bridge?
Well, actually, we started thinking about it because Public Works said they're thinking about putting a cycle track on the north side of the bridge, which, there's reasons, there's plenty of reasons for that. So it could extend to IKEA and the Bridge Trail.
Great, thank you.
So starting with the east of San Pablo, on options two and three, how would pedestrians access the bus islands? Is there going to be like a set spot they need to, or can they get across the stretch of it, crossing the bike lane? Is there any sort of tool to separate them from a bicyclist running into them?
Right, so I think I had a slide in here somewhere. There it is. So there would be these crosswalks, as you can see on the screen, that provide crossing opportunities for pedestrians to get onto the boarding islands, crossing the bicycle pedestrians out there.
Okay. And then west of San Pablo is kind of the question that you just asked. Coming eastbound, going over the bridge to access the cycle track, you would have to cross over at Hollis, correct?
I believe so.
Was there any kind of design consideration of bicyclists getting over those two lanes of traffic from people coming over that bridge? Because that's kind of a... Because that's kind of a... As it is, is a sketchy term.
Yeah. So that is something that we still need to delve into. And that is what the next phase of the project would look into, what the intersection treatments are to take people as... As there was a question earlier on this, onto the south side of the street, as well as, you know, where the two-track or two-way cycle track diverges back into one lane in each direction, what the crossing opportunities would be. And that is all something that we are going to look into in the next stage of the project.
If I could chime in, I think the current thought, anyway, is to do what's called a protected intersection. I think that NACTO guidelines have provisions for that. It's where you have a green painted bike lane essentially parallel to the crosswalk on the inside of the crosswalk on all four legs of the intersection. And then, there's a special, I guess, protected, like, island area at each corner. And we'd certainly have that at both ends of the two-way cycle track, so that at Emory Street at the east end and probably in front of IKEA at the west end, so the cyclists can transition safely from bike lanes on either side of the street to the two-way cycle track on the one side. We may also need to have similar treatment at some of the major intersections along the way, such as Hollis and Horton, so that cyclists can make turns from those streets in and out of the two-way cycle track.
Yeah. And just to provide a visual aid to that, the little island that you see on the northeast corner of San Pablo and 40th Street is what would be implemented at each of the four corners of the intersection to provide that concept of protected.
And if you go to the option two, I think, for there, that shows the parallel bike lanes, parallel to the crosswalks. Except in this diagram, it's only on two legs of the intersection. At a full protected intersection, it would be on all four legs.
And my last question is, west of San Pablo, under, I believe it's option one, where you have the bike lane and then the cars on the other side of it, would that be treated green along the whole path?
So there are different... Different cities have adopted different methods of doing it. What we have successfully employed in various cities is to leave it the color of the asphalt, but have a skip stripe at intersections and driveways, just so as to make the bicyclist, as well as the vehicles, aware of a potential conflict point.
Yeah, I asked that because in telegraph, people seem to not be able to realize that there's that separation. And quite frequently, you have cars in the bike lane pulling in and out, so it can create a safety issue.
Right. One way of dealing with that is to have green paint for, you know, like 20 or 30 feet before the intersection or the driveway. Usually, it's done more with the intersection because that's a potential higher conflict point as opposed to a driveway, just to make bicyclists aware of the fact that they are approaching an intersection.
Thank you.
Hi. The bulk of my questions are about the eastern part of 40th Street between San Pablo and Adeline. And so, does the ridership projection suggest that we need a larger passenger waiting area in that area that we're really designing our... It seems like our focus is designing these. It's a pretty wide sidewalk there already. And it's a small segment. It's a lot of buses and boardings happen there. But is it really important? Do we really have the need to really increase that? As... Do we need to make that such a predominant feature of what we're trying to do here?
Well, one thing that we heard from Director Harper of AC Transit yesterday was that they are... And correct me if I'm wrong, that they are planning on increasing the transbay services of the line F by almost 50% by the end of this year.
Oh, wow.
Which means that, you know, more and more people... I mean, F is always, you know, jam-packed, at least during peak periods. So that would definitely...
Okay. That answers the question. If they're going to increase the service in that, then yeah, then I could definitely see that we would have that. I didn't know that. So do we have traffic counts? And Diane, you said you were, but if we took away the left-hand turn lane, the eastbound left-hand turn lane from 40th on to Adeline northbound, do we have the counts for that? How severe of an impact do we anticipate that would have?
Our engineers think that it would be severe enough that people would be diverted to other streets. They were not as sanguine about that as they were the left turn on to San Pablo.
Huh. Interesting. Wow, okay. And then, so buses stopping in traffic as we're proposing, which we now do on Shell Mountain Street, do we have any idea of... There is another travel lane on both these streets. So do we have an idea of what those impacts would have? On Shell Mountain, you can't pass. You know, people do cross over the W line. Here, they have an alternate lane to take. So do we think the impacts of buses stopping in those travel lanes to pick up passengers is going to have a severe impact during commute times?
I have two answers to this. There was a UC Berkeley group that did a five-city study called Evaluation of Bus Bulbs. And they found out that because most of the... A lot of the times, the buses currently stop with their rear ends in the travel lane in order to make it possible to get back in. That takes them longer than it would be to just stop in the travel lane, so it would actually speed up the traffic. The second answer to that is from Ronnie Hatrip of the Emery Go-Round. Their buses can take three to five minutes to load a wheelchair.
It takes longer. I don't know where they're getting the time. Every time on... It takes 15 minutes to load a wheelchair.
Takes a while.
Yeah.
So for the Emery Go-Round, that might not be quite the same. People would have to go around. It could be a problem.
But they have that option. They have a lane to go around. They wouldn't be waiting. So... And I'm just wondering, with the traffic flow that we have and the numbers that we have on a commute time, you know, and people trying to get over into that other lane, is it going to be real severe? But like you said, most of the times, the buses hang out far enough to where people can't get around anyway now.
I think generally, it would be an improvement or a wash, except for an Emery Go-Round loading a wheelchair.
Yeah. Very good. That's all my questions for now. Thank you.
All right. I have a couple of questions. I'm curious to know a little bit about your experience with the dedicated bus lane and the bike lane that we see here in option one, crossing. Because it looks like the bikes are going to have to cross in front of the dedicated bus lane to go through that little dedicated space to turn.
Right. No, I think that's a very good point. My answer to that question would be that since buses are stopped at the bus stop, they would be, you know, like, at relatively low or nil speed. So they might be aware of, you know, like, a bicyclist trying to get in, because they would obviously be checking that for merging into the traffic for the vehicles that are flowing in that particular lane. However, it is not, you know, like, the best of options to be able to. This was the moderate level of improvements that we could build in with minimal, you know, interventions.
Do you have experience with this kind of situation done elsewhere?
So not that I can readily think of. You know, Telegraph, to a certain extent, had it at some point of time while they were still experimenting with this idea, before bringing in a separated bikeway. I'm not very sure of what the results...
Oh, comes right now? Okay. Okay. Are the bus boarding islands elevated?
Yes.
They are? So it makes it easier for people to just go straight into the bus? Okay.
It would still require the deployment of wheelchair ramps because they are not level boarding.
It's about the same as a sidewalk level.
Oh, okay.
Right. They're not the higher, you know, just straight walk in.
Right. Okay. That's what I was wondering. And for option two, on the east side of San Pablo, is there a reason why that no-turn lane going westbound can't be a turn lane? Yeah, that one. Is there a reason why the lane that's closest to the median can't turn into San Pablo? Like, if you're going westbound?
It's a shared through and left-hand lane.
Yeah. So right now, the lane that's north of the median is a no-turn lane.
Right.
In this option, right? Is there a reason why that one can't turn left onto San Pablo?
I believe the traffic counts that we found through, or, you know, that the city provided us, indicated that there was not a whole lot of left-hand movements onto San Pablo Avenue, which could not be accommodated by a combination of either using Adeline Street to reach San Pablo Avenue, or, you know, for people accessing Safeway again, you know, taking a left turn onto Emory and getting on there.
If you have a lot of through volume and a little bit of left-turn volume, and you have a left-through lane, you have a lot of three people sitting behind the left turners.
Okay. All right. That makes sense.
Another question.
Okay. Yeah. That's it for my questions. You go ahead.
So I was just thinking about the west and the east, and I had a question about... It looks like the... Between San Pablo and Adeline, you have a one-way concept in all of these, right? For the bicycling? Sorry. Do you have...
For bicycles?
The bicyclists are each on either side?
Yes.
And in options two and three of the other one, you have a paired on one side of the street? Or you... I'm just wondering, how do those two come together?
That was something that Charlie was explaining a few minutes back. This would most likely occur at Emory Street through the concept of protected intersection, where, you know, there would be these bicycle skip stripe lanes adjacent to the crosswalk, giving an opportunity for people to transition from one side or the south side of the street onto the north side.
So you... So, okay. So I understood it as a protected option, but you're actually saying to cross-traffic, you could use it as a protected option to actually go perpendicular at the intersection?
Exactly.
Okay.
I actually have one more question. Are there any other community meetings planned for this project?
Not for this option. I mean, not for this stage. But what we do want to do is take all the input we get and develop one option that we think everybody will like, based on the input we got, and then go back out.
Okay.
Well, let me just also say, not a community meeting, but there are, I think, three different committee meetings scheduled in September. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the Transportation Committee, and the Public Art Committee. And then, a study session at the City Council on October 2nd. Is that right? 16th. Sorry. October 16th, City Council Study Session. So there are a number of upcoming public meetings, but not community meetings, per se.
Thank you. All right. If there aren't any more questions, then I will open this up for public comment. Okay. Seeing none, we'll close it and go to Commissioner Comments. Does anybody want to get us started? Commissioner Keller?
I'll be happy to get us started. I'm going to take a while, because I have a couple of things I want to address and get an understanding of. So first of all, as a bike commuter and a person who walks primarily through our city and other cities, I'm struggling and still trying to get the general public and particularly our legislative bodies to see bicyclists and pedestrians, number one, as a transit vehicle or a transit option. We're often seen as recreational users. We're often seen as exercisers. And so I think our needs are often subjugated because we're not seen as equals as vehicles, buses, and et cetera. So I want to put that out there because it's going to be germane to everything else I say, is I'm coming from a person who uses bicycling and walking as a form of transportation, and I don't feel I get the respect and I don't get the priority that vehicles get. That mentioned, I'm really opposed, strongly opposed, to two-way cycle tracks. And I'm really fearful that what I'm hearing is that's the chosen already, that we're decided on 40th Street, we're going to do two-way cycle tracks. The fact that we only saw one option with bicycles on both sides of the street and in the travel lane where they belong is very bothersome to me. And the other thing I'm very concerned about, and I'm starting to get really upset about it, is that the two-way cycle track is never seen as a con. And it was never put in there. And think of yourself as driving. When you're hitting an intersection and you're turning right, you look left and you take your turn. You never look right. Cars do not ever look right when they're making right-hand turn. And if I'm coming up on a two-way cycle track, I'm going to be in conflict in every single street and driveway I come across. And this stretch of street has a lot of drivers and a lot of streets. Two-way cycle tracks are very dangerous. They've just installed them on Bancroft, which is a one-way street in Berkeley, all along the south side of UC Berkeley. And you can't... You're not supposed to ride in the street. You have to take the two-way cycle track. And there are no less than two, but probably three signs at Bancroft and Fulton or Oxford, because Fulton at that point, that say, "Do not turn left." And so the bicyclists in the two-way cycle track cross Fulton Street to continue on Bancroft. So any car turning left will impact those bicyclists. So there's three, at least two signs, but maybe three, that say, "Do not turn left." And without exception or exaggeration, every time in there, someone turns left. So people do what's convenient for them, whether it's illegal or not. And then, we just impact that by keep putting people in danger. You're not going to... In this small stretch of 40th Street, you're not going to change people's behavior. You're not going to retrain them to do the right thing. So I'm very fearful that we're already choosing the two-way cycle track over putting bicycle lanes where they belong in the flow of traffic. So that's one thing. And I particularly... I will not support any plan that looks at a two-way cycle track. That's just going to kill it for me. I have the same feeling about sherros, but I'm a little bit more flexible on those because cars do not understand what a sherro is. Our state has not done a proper job in teaching drivers the law of sherros. But I think if they're painted green and they're there, and I think if we go with that, prior to when the sherro starts, I believe we need a sign at the signal or whatever that says bicycle has full right of the lane, so that people entering that area know that we have the full right of the lane, because no one really knows that. They don't understand that a sherro means I have rights to the whole lane. Travel up 40th Street on the way to Bark. People are going to honk at you. They're going to cut you off. They're going to push you off the road. They don't work, but I'm a little less strict on that, if that's where we find that it works. So what I'd like to see is, I don't... I think we've done... First of all, I haven't mentioned that. I really think you guys did a great job. You did a lot of work. I appreciate that. This is complex. This is a very tight space that you're working in, so I do respect and appreciate the work that you did put into it. I'd like to ask that we look a little farther. So what I'd like to see on this street is, I'd like to see two bus-only lanes in the east and westbound. I'd like to see two bicycle lanes, one on each side of the street, traveling within the flow of traffic. I like the cycle tracks around the bus stops. At Shell Mountain Street, they're working very nicely where we have put them. I really do support those. The bus island with bus shelters, I totally support that. I totally support the elimination of the bus stops at... Hallack Street, is it? To move those along? And I think that what... In order to do that, we need to look at using easements along all of 40th Street, not just where the bus stops are, but all along 40th Street in order to accommodate these needs. And I'm totally in favor of removing all the parking on the northbound, if that's what we need to do. I'm really surprised that of all businesses along 40th Street, Granite Expo mentioned they needed that parking. Now, of course, every business wants parking in front of their stores. There's no one that would give that willingly. But Granite Expo has a private parking lot. They have their own lot that no one else can use. So it's like, for them to say, "I need that parking on the street," and then be the only ones that say that, I'm really kind of surprised at that. And I will not vote not to eliminate parking because of that particular reason. Let's see. The bus... The interesting thing on the, what I call the east end, which is between San Pablo and Adeline Street, it seems like the bus-only lane, which I really do support those, but it seems like that area, it's... The benefits are not going to override the problems that that's going to have, particularly the way that the bicycles have to be in a sherro. And then, we're going to have a weave lane where the buses have to come back into traffic and the bicycles go over to the curbside, so that weave thing, for that short period of time, I just don't know that the benefits outweigh the cost on that. So I think we need to relook... Reexamine that bus-only lane. And I... Now, with my broken arms and et cetera, I'm riding the bus a lot, so I have a particular appreciation for moving the buses along quickly. And I really... I'm really finding it... I'm finding it's paying off that AC Transit is now giving us service that we haven't had in many, many years. And it's because we're finally giving AC Transit the respect that they need, and we're trying to make facilities for them that make their systems work. And I think this overall plan is very good. But I really want to... I want to stress that we keep bikes in the travel lanes where automobiles are used to seeing us and that we don't create an unsafe environment for a short period. I mean, 40th Street, when we're looking at, this is a very short... I mean, Forty Street, when we're looking at, this is a very short stretch of roadway, that we're not going to change drivers' perceptions on where bikes belong and what they're doing, and as we keep putting bikes in special things, it keeps removing us from being seen as a vehicle, and, oh, these are the special people who need to be over here or in this protected lane. And I just think that we need to quit doing things like that. When Mr. Fricki was in, on City Council, he and I had a debate about the two-way cycle track in Santa Cruz, and I've seen accidents in Santa Cruz near the boardwalk where people are turning right out of that and they impact bicycles. And I just don't see these being, the success of these do not outweigh the dangers of that. So I think that's all I have for now.
Alright, thank you. Would you like to continue?
Certainly. So again, thank you for all your work, and I would also like to continue, I would not like to see a two-way cycle track. I would be for elimination of parking throughout the stretch and having bicycle lanes on both sides, mainly for eliminating the parking is creating that issue of, one of your options, I believe it was 1A, I've done a similar bike ride on Telegraph, and people just have not figured out how to use it, so it creates a bunch of unintended consequences that was supposed to be a very nice thing and separate bicycles for safety, but it's kind of made a situation even worse. In terms of San Pablo, I liked the, actually the short-term improvements. I've kind of found that you're going to probably have some unintended consequences once you start really getting into those ADT and traffic volumes of trying to push it out onto the other streets. So that's where, one recommendation I would have for that is, what's the term for these?
Oh, the sherros.
The sherros, maybe making that kind of how other portions of Fortieth are completely solid, greened throughout, looking into that. Let's see the other questions. I talked about parking, and if possible, you know, with the removal of parking to have the bus-only lanes throughout the stretch would also be beneficial. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
Alright. So I'll start with my mantra, that I'm sure we've all talked about, and that's designing for all ages and abilities. And that's my lens when I look at these kind of plans. And in terms of the contention between cycle tracks versus not a cycle track, I'm going to say that I'm really interested in the cycle track idea, because I think that it separates bicyclists of all ages and abilities, unlike myself. I feel safe in what's there at this moment, but I would not feel safe with a child or anybody commuting younger than me in that same lane. So, the cycle track idea is interesting for that reason, because it separates us from traffic. That said, the, I'm really interested in getting feedback from Bikies Bay on that idea. What are their thoughts, and what are their recommendations? I trust their ideas. The, the idea of having a cycle, east of San Pablo, that, the 1A idea with the right turn on Adeline, right in front of the buses?
San Pablo.
On San, it's, it's on San Pablo? There we go. I wasn't, I didn't really understand that, and I've never seen that anywhere, and it didn't sound as though that was something that you're familiar with? It's option one, figure 2.1? Yeah.
That, that's for bikes, not for vehicles?
Understood. And I wouldn't feel safe using that, and so I wouldn't be interested in that at all, for myself or for all ages and all abilities.
You're referring to the, the short little separate bike lane there next to the right turn lane?
Yes.
There, I don't know if this was made clear, there would be a separate bicycle signal to cross San Pablo, so that you wouldn't have the cars turning right at the same time the bikes are trying to cross San Pablo.
Okay, that's, that's great, and that helps me feel a little bit more comfortable with it. The part that I'm uncomfortable with is having to go right in front of the buses as they're also potentially trying to exit left at the same time. And so that creates a conflict that I'm just not comfortable with. And so, in terms of creating a bike lane that's protected, separated from traffic, that goes behind the bus stop, I love that idea. It's working really well in Shellmount, and I feel much safer there now. And so, anything that separates the bicyclists from the potential conflict with bus riders and traffic, I'm all for that. Let me go back to the questions here. So, for question one, on the discussion questions, sure, I would be open to the option 1A being implemented in short term. My question for that is, what timeframe are we, are we talking, short term versus long term? How long would we have that type of, type of design there?
Diana, do you know the answer to that question?
I have heard Thomas say. Option one is pretty simple, it's mostly paint, could be done pretty quick. I've heard Thomas say, it might be like, Thomas Kronmeyer of Community Design and Architecture, it might be like 10 to 15 years. Because what we're trying to do is define something that we can have as a project description to seek funding. So, define the project, you seek funding, you get funding, you've designed, you know, it takes a while.
Got it. So we're looking at a 10-year plan possibly for the one, if we say yes, we would like that. And what would be the other option, that we don't have any improvements for that timeframe?
The way it is, yeah.
Okay. So I support any, any change to this area. Alright. Question two. Do I want to keep parking? No, I don't think there's really a need, given the businesses that are on Fortieth, and the parking that I see available for customers of those businesses. So, yes, I support eliminating parking. I agree with some of my fellow commissioners on Telegraph, riding a bicycle is very confusing, and the intention there was to separate us from, from cars, and I just rode that this weekend with a lot of friends on bikes, and I felt really unsafe and unsure what was going to happen at any point in that stretch. And so, I'm a bit more hesitant to say yes to separating the, like having the car in between traffic and, and the bikes on the other side. So, less open to that idea. And, number four, of course, yes, I support having a bus-only lane in both directions. I'm a transit user also, and I think that it's great that we're starting to look at these designs as bicyclists and pedestrians being a user of transit. We are. And we want to, that trip on the bus to be as efficient as possible, so I support that. The bikeway placed at sidewalk level, yes, I like that, that's the question five, that's my preference. And eliminating the bus travel, oh, the bus stop for question six, of course, that makes a lot of sense. I think that we, you all did a great job in studying that, and it doesn't seem like that bus stop is really used by, by transit patrons, so I support that. I'd like to end by just thanking you all for this work. You put a lot of work into this study, Diana and Deepak, you did a great job presenting it, it's a lot, it's really heavy, and a lot for us to retain, but I appreciated it, and I think that we're headed in the right direction. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a lot of work in a very constrained situation, so I appreciate that you've been eking out different kinds of options there. For the area between San Pablo and Adeline, I think definitely some improvement in the interim is better than none at all. I think the thing that I keep coming back to for all of these options is the transitions, and not being really clear on how the transitions are going to work. When I look at that little right turn pocket in front of the bus transit-only lane, I worry about people going in front of buses as well. And I understand that it's a, it's supposed to be more protected, but just looking at it, it doesn't feel that way to me. And I have to say, I am a recreational cyclist, but I don't ride in the city very much, because I'm not that, I just, I'm not that comfortable doing it. So, I defer on a lot of this stuff to the regular cyclists in the group, even if you don't agree. I don't have that much more knowledge on that. But the transitions in places like that, where you have a transit only and a bus pulling out and bicycles pulling in front of it, just intuitively, it doesn't look right to me. I think that of the other options, that the second option is probably one that I would prefer, just because I think that the, having the turn onto Adeline is a good thing, having the turn pocket there, and that keeping the median at San Pablo also reduces that intersection a little bit visually. Between, west of San Pablo Avenue, I don't, it's, I don't think we need the parking, I think we should use the street for the transportation rather than for the parking. I have mixed feelings about the bikeway between the parked cars and the curb, because I see it coming online in San Francisco all over the place, and I think that there's a learning curve in all these things, there's a learning curve when you have the back-end diagonal parking, there's all these things that ultimately probably will be safer, but right now, there's a transition period where people don't know what to do with it. And I think that signage and the roadway marking and the roadway painting, asphalt painting and things like that can make a difference. So I have mixed feelings about that. I think at this point, I would also feel a little bit more uncertain about riding between the car and the curb, because I don't think people know what to do now, but there is a process that people need to be educated on these things. I think that the bus-only lanes are good in both directions, and I also, because of the transitions and the, the short length of this segment on Fortieth Street on the west side, I would also support the two-way separated bike lanes rather than a cycle track, because I think it's going to really complicate and confuse the crossings and the mergings with the other bikeways in the area, and I think that it will just make more sense to people to have one, you know, be on the side of the, of the street where your traffic is flowing. I would love to see a bikeway placed at sidewalk level and street trees. On the Planning Commission, we have had study sessions and we've talked for years about, how do you get some separation for pedestrians on Fortieth Street? How do you get the trees next to the curb instead of behind everybody? So if there is a realistic possibility of doing that, I would say, go for it. I know it's more infrastructure, I know it's more funding, I know it's more drainage and more expenses, but in the long run, it's going to be better. The trees right now are not looking all that great anyway, they've been there for a long time, but they weren't planted very well, so I think we'd have a much more beautiful street if we could get trees next to the, next to the curb. And eliminating the Haven Street stop makes a lot of sense. That's what I have.
Commissioner Thompson, would you like to go next?
Sure. Yeah, I did want to thank everyone for the amount of work, this is, it's great to have it all here. I did also want to, on that point though, say that there are two things that throughout the presentation confused me. One was the summary tables, which I thought were really helpful, didn't have a key. So if you could add the key, that would be fantastic. The other element was this question of the crossings, and if there is truly an idea about crossing to a two-way north and south, that absolutely has to be on the plans, because that, that question of, of making that transition, that's a huge question. So it literally has to show up there. So add that, please. In terms of sort of a couple issues, like broad, general issues, that I'd love for you guys to keep thinking about as, as we go, I too do not support the two-way cycle track because, because of the fact that the intersections become a little bit weird and crazy, because you have to make turning movements, but you're on the wrong side of the road, as well as, as well as conflicts. So I really want the cyclists to be part of the transit system as an integrated part, and the fact that the, the best bus efficiency is embedded in option two and three, and that the one-way is embedded in option one, like I find that problematic, in terms of, if you're really going for bus efficiency, great, but I don't support the two-way cycle, so I can't get those things to come together. So, so that's a key component. Then, the other thing is that you've shown a lot of great sections, but where the intersections happen and what's going to happen at the intersections, that, that is essential, and I have no idea on a lot of this. So it's great to see the sections, the sections are very thorough, that's really helpful, but we need to know the intersection information, and I understand it's coming up in the process, so yay. I did want to, can you pull the questions up again? Because I just want to answer the questions to give you the very direct feedback on that. And I'll start with question number six, and I'd say, yes, I support the elimination. Okay, so starting from, from question number one. I do favor that second option because of the clarity of the circulation, I have the same problems that have already been expressed around the first one. You know, to have nothing happen isn't particularly desirable, but I don't like the first one either, so I'm sort of torn on that. The, the eliminating parking, I agree with the idea of eliminating parking on Fortieth, I think you're, you're trying for efficiency, you need to get it from somewhere, I think parking is probably the best place to get it. The bikeway in the, sort of on the, between traffic and the car, I prefer that as both a commuter and a recreational cyclist, just because again, it's a question of clarity of roles. Doesn't mean we couldn't learn something different, and maybe there is some value to being more protected, particularly for younger, younger age groups, but we don't know how to use it yet. And so, a question about like, how do we use it, how do we educate people, I think that's an essential question of making that change. The question number four, I think the, the bigger problem I had was I was still stuck on the two-way problem, so I couldn't even really answer number four, because I don't support the two-way cycle route. And then, the, I think question number five, I didn't like the bikeway at sidewalk level because of the questions around adjacencies and transitions. I like the idea of protection, which is sort of the reason for raising it, but I didn't like the idea that you might fall off it, or that it was, it was, if it were moved, or it was separated from the travel lane, it, you, you wouldn't fall off it, it was sort of better there, but then I didn't really support that location. So, so like, I couldn't really get a good answer for five, I think is sort of my answer, because there were too many variables. So, so those are my comments in terms of trying to address your questions.
Great, thank you.
Alright, well, anyway, I wanted to say to you, thank you very much for what you've done. I too have to kind of agree with, the way it's drawn made it extremely confusing to look at, I was looking at stuff back and forth, keys weren't there, and I really think that if you're going to draw a section, or you're going to draw an elevation, why not some more orthographic? You had a really nice orthographic drawing, but it was a completely different place, it'd be nice to see what it would look like in the location that we're talking about. I'm a person who also rides bikes, I, for my age, it's impressive, I ride BMX, and so I, in, in that sense, you know, you're pedaling really hard, and so, a lot of things that you're not really looking for is, you know, lights and other cars, you're just kind of bombing through it. And, one thing I can say is that you're coming down Oakland, and you're coming from Oakland, you're, you know, you're used to this one thing, and all of a sudden, you cross this Emeryville, this Emeryville line, and all of a sudden, things change. And I think it kind of, that, that kind of irks me. We're talking about having a two-way going on, and we're talking, you know, just continue, take it up to the bridge and call it a day, and I think that's probably the simplest way of just, just easing it. And I don't know if it's been looked at as far as space is concerned, I know we have a lot of buses, but buses do what buses do, and bikes do what bikes do. And I think there's a, there's a, you know, bikes try to look for other people, and buses try to look for other people, and I think it's just a combination of the two. I really like the fact that we're trying to think of ways of putting a lot of deciduous trees and a lot of shading and stuff like that, but it does open up some issues, is that when you put a lot of plantings there, in some situations, like you're coming up along certain areas, I think there's one by Target down there, and just this big planting area in front, it just blocks everybody's view, and so, it opens up situations, so just kind of look at that when you're kind of studying this stuff. If, if at all possible, I, I am against everybody else but removing that bus stop. I mean, I just figure, it's there. I mean, I just figure it's there. If it doesn't, it's, I don't think you're going to save 10 minutes. I don't think you're going to save five minutes. I don't even think you're going to save 30 seconds. If it's not used, the bus driver sees it's not used, and I kind of, maybe I'm missing something. But I just take it out, or you leave it in. If it's there, no one's on it, no one's on it. And why have somebody who's, you know, we're all getting older, and that extra block and a half might be an issue for someone being there. So I would vote just leave it alone. I, in terms of, in terms of question number one, I, I would say, I, I would just like the better connections. I like option one B if anything else. I too kind of like, a little mixed on whether keeping the park or haven't, the parking or haven't removed. If it doesn't affect the parking overall, like it looks like it, it looks like it really has, you know, you get better bus movement, you get better traffic, then I'm, I'm not a problem with moving the parking away. I definitely don't like having the bikes parked between, the bikes used between parked cars and sidewalk or something like that. I just, I just think just, you know, do it as it is normal, make a buffer. And if you can go for a wider buffer as much as possible, give it that. And another thing too is that we're, you know, we're here in the United States. And so a lot of things that we're looking at, this, this circulation is like, you know, are we trying to represent Emeryville as being Europe or not? And it's kind of an interesting question because i- if you're in Europe, I mean, it's just, it's classic. Bikes and, bikes and, bikes and people are number one, and cars are second. It's just the way it is. And buses and transportation are, and, and some of the other persons on some of the discussions that brought it up, like, you know, take the bikes and put them on another street if you have to. I mean, why not look at that? Why not take it down another, another block? And why even mess with having the block? You know, I was even thinking like, you know, run, run, run a cool bike lane down the parking lot so it intersects right into Target. I know, I know this property belonged to somebody else. But I mean, look at it, look at it, you know, maybe look at something out of the box there. And consider, and consider you just like, maybe, maybe at where Adeline comes in, you just take everybody off of it and go down, you know, front of City Hall if you want to. And then have them, have something really cool at the bridge. There's a, there's that dead zone, you know, maybe a couple of cool circle paths and pick it up back up and carry it off that way. Be kind of cool. It'd be something a little interesting. I think, I think bikers like moving around. And I think they, they, they way prefer not being around cars and buses anyway. I mean, they're outside. Why put them in, why put them in four o'clock traffic? That's my comments.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. First off, thank you very much for all this hard work that you both did. This is a lot of information, and it was a great presentation. And I guess I'll start off by saying that I live right on 40th and Harlan in this building that's right on the other side of the parking lot here. So I see all this stuff that you presented on a daily basis. And I consider myself a multimodal kind of person. I drive a car, ride a bike, ride public transit. And it really just depends on what is most convenient to where I'm going, in terms of what I choose. And so I guess I'll start off by saying that I also don't support the two-way cycle track on one side. I think it doesn't flow well with what's going on on the east side of Adeline, on the Oakland side. So for me, I think it would be very important to kind of keep the, you know, bike lane, lanes flowing from Oakland to Emeryville on either side. And I do support having a buffer bike, or like the bike lane buffered from the traffic. I also don't like the bike lanes on the other side, you know, buffered by the cars. So I appreciate some kind of buffer between the dedicated bike lanes and the traffic, but not with the, with the cars. I do think it's confusing. And so in terms of the parking elimination, I really strongly support eliminating the parking on 40th Street because you can't even tell that there's parking, that parking's an option on 40th Street. Like I hardly ever see people parked on 40th. So I say strong yes to that. Yeah, the Granite Expo has a parking lot, and there's a ton of parking, you know, on, on this side of 40th Street. So big, strong support for that. I also really support widening the sidewalk along 40th Street. I walk that sidewalk often, and it is extremely narrow. Like you can barely fit two people, you know, in between the trees and the, and the edge of the sidewalk. So definitely support widening the sidewalk, even if it is the expensive option. But it, you know, I kind of see this as a, although the, the goal is for the bus time reduction, it's much more than just that, right? We have the pedestrian experience and the bicycle experience and, and the buses and traffic and everything. So I kind of see this as a very holistic change that's happening here. And part of that for me is the pedestrian experience as well. And so along with widening the sidewalk, I would also suggest putting in the flashing lights for the pedestrian crossing from, you know, crossing from, on 40th Street, similar to what we have on San Pablo, because it is extremely difficult to cross the street. And not a lot of people cross the street there, so I don't think it would be very disruptive to the traffic flow. But when there are people crossing there, I think it's, it's extremely important to have the cars be aware that somebody's crossing because it's a very, very long, I mean, it's a wide street. And sometimes people are crossing and they're halfway there and, you know, like folks from the other side don't see them. And they're kind of stuck in the middle of moving traffic.
We are planning to get a stoplight there.
Hey, stoplight. All right, well, that answers, that takes care of that. So, and I guess I just kind of want to move to the questions. For the short-term solution or for the short-term option, I do agree that something's better than nothing. But it, you know, I'm also obviously very uncomfortable with the bikes crossing in front of the buses, especially because the buses are so tall. And when you're on a bike, you're not as, at the eye level of a bus driver. I mean, I've never driven a bus. I don't really know what their perspective is like. But I know that from a bicyclist perspect, you know, from bicyclist perspective, it would be extremely scary to go in front of a huge bus. So that's something that is, that I don't like about that option. But for the longer-term option, I think that I prefer option two over option three. So let's see. Yes, eliminating parking, yes. I'm going to skip question three because I feel strongly about the parking elimination. So if the parking's removed, should, from the eastbound, and an eastbound bus lane is added, I do support the westbound vehicle lane being converted to a bus-only lane. And another strong yes to the curb extension. And I hardly ever see people on Haven Street waiting for the bus. Some people do wait for the bus there, but it's not as much as I see on other bus stops. So it's also a strong yes to that elimination. So with that said, if there is, any, any other comments? Anybody else want to?
I just had one, which is it sounds like there's pretty much a consensus coming out that the parking isn't necessary. But if you do need to keep looking at the parking, that option seems, if, if it's a two-way, if it's, if it's not the two-way cycle track, but if it's a one-lane thing, it's just paint. Whether you put the car on this side and the buffer, or the car on that side and the bike on the inside, it, it doesn't seem like something that's critical to moving forward and figuring the rest of the stuff out.
Chair Barrera, can I just make an observation? I think you probably all have an appreciation now for how the consultants and we have been struggling with trying to fit all of these things into, you know, it's a pretty wide street, but still, it's a limited amount of real estate. And I've heard some comments that against the two-way cycle track and in favor of a bike lane in each direction. The medians, as I think you can now appreciate, are really critical. We first started this process, we said, well, let's think about getting rid of the medians and just look at 40th Street curb to curb, or right-of-way, full width of right-of-way, treat it as a bank, blank slate. How could we reconfigure everything? Then when we realized that changing the medians is going to jeopardize $5.4 million worth of funding for the 3706 San Pablo Avenue project, we decided, well, we better just leave the medians where they are. And that puts a huge constraint on what you can do. So if you want to have a bike lane on either direction, and you also want bus-only lanes, you pretty much are stuck with only one car lane in each direction. And you just, and if you're willing to accept that, then that's fine. Otherwise, you have to do some kind of a trade-off. That's going to have, you know, pretty substantial impacts on traffic circulation. So fear and pairs, of course, will analyze all this stuff. But I just want to put it out there that there's trade-offs here. And as long as that median is going to stay where it is, you kind of have to give up something.
So I would like to respond to that because I think the thing that I would give up for, in response to that, would be the dedicated bus lane.
Well, and in response, that's why I mentioned, I understand where you're coming from. But we have some options within that. We have removing the parking. We have narrowing the median. And we have using the easement on the south side of the street. So we, we have some workarounds. There's things that we need to expand farther, you know, before we eliminate the bus lane. I mean, if we have to eliminate something, we have to eliminate something. But I think, first of all, let's look at all the real estate that we can acquire by taking the parking away, by narrowing the median, and by taking the easements. We get space on all sides and the, and the middle as well. So I think we could look through that. And while I have the mic, I do just want to express some appreciation to Commissioner Guerrero to reminding me that I'm, not everyone rides like I do, and there are different abilities. And I was reminded of that several years ago quite curtly by a mother who had young children, that my kids and I don't ride like you do. So sometimes I need that kind of reminder, like not everyone rides the same way. So thank you for that.
Well, I mean, I would add though, I mean, thank you Charlie for talking about the median. Like this whole thing, if that was a major constraint, that should have been key to this presentation. So, so I think that's also one of my thoughts about how to clarify, because there's a lot of information here. Is that if that is, you know, an essential ingredient, and if that question about the median versus the bus improvement, you know, take the bikes out, you know, that they're competing, the bus and the bikes are competing, that that median should be in the conversation. So make sure that it's included in here.
Okay.
Any other comments? Commissioner Guerrero, you look like you want to say something. No. All right, well, if there are no more comments, I guess that wraps that up. And I, thank, thank you very much for all the work on this. And I'll move on to the next item, which are planning commissioner comments. Does anybody have any comments that they would like to provide?
I just want to quickly say I am looking forward to working with you guys over the course of the next year, and happy to be on.
All right, welcome. Thank you.
I'll second that with you, Jonathan. That's really, really awesome. You guys are a lot of fun. I had a great night tonight.
Excellent. All right, with that, I guess the meeting is adjourned.